All right. I'd like to call to order the Watkins County Council meeting for February 26, 2019. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
One second, I'm not ready for you. Barbara Brenner?
Here.
Red Brown?
Here.
Barry Buchanan?
Here.
Tyler Byrd?
Here.
Todd Donovan?
Here.
Carol Frazer?
Here.
Sat Paul Sedu?
Here.
Would you all rise and join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, a couple of announcements, please turn off your cellphone, and if you'll be handing out paperwork to council members, please give one copy to the county clerk for our files. First item up is minutes, there's three sets of minutes, do I have a motion to approve?
With approval.
Ms. Brenner moves approval, Mr. Donovan seconds, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that passes seven zero. Next item up is public hearing announcements. We have several public hearings. These, the first set of public hearings are specifically for the ordinances for which we'll be voting on, and then after we're done with this, there'll be an open public session for issues unrelated to these ordinances. Audience members who wish to address the council during a public hearing are asked to sign up at the back of the room prior to the meeting. The council chair will ask those who've signed up to form a line at the podiums. Each speaker should state his or her name for the record, and optionally include city of residence. Speakers will be given three minutes to address the council, council staff will keep track of time limits, and inform speakers when they have 30 seconds left to conclude comments. When a large group of individuals supports the same position on an issue, the selection of one or two representatives to speak on behalf of the entire group is encouraged. When using the microphone, please speak close enough that you can hear yourself on the speakers. This will ensure that everybody else can hear your comments. And, in the first item up, is an ordinance amending Watkins County Code 6.04 Animal Control, chapters 6.04 dot 20, sorry, 020, definitions in 6 dot 04 dot 031 Administration and Enforcement. I have no one signed up, does anybody wish to speak to this issue? Seeing none, I'll close the public session, what's the will of the council? Ms. Brenner moves approval, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Frazer seconds, any discussion? Mr. Byrd?
Please go first.
Just was wondering why we needed a definition of adult dog that starts at seven months, and I'm just kind of wondering where this, it all seems innocuous, but I'm sort of wondering what problem it's solving, where it's coming from.
That's a good question, I thought it was fine, too.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any problem with it, but it's proposed by the executive, so you're stuck, Mr. Schroeder.
Tell us about adult dogs.
Why is an adult dog at seven months and not eight months or six months? That's not my question, but like, what's the kind of gist of this whole thing here?
So Tyler Schroeder, Deputy Executive, there's been a lot of discussion surrounding the animal control contracts in the last couple of bit. We've extended one of the contracts to move forward, and we will be coming back with council in the next couple of weeks to discuss the next amendment associated with it. What was your specific question?
Just the...
Why are we doing this?
Yeah, why, and there was something about like, other, other animal care and control agencies to update that, and I don't know what those are.
I had the same question, because definitions seem like it was like, any shelter, any facility, any like employee of those places, all of a sudden we were deeming them as, as animal control agencies.
But it sounded right.
I mean, they're pretty minor changes to what's here in the code, I just, but that was the one thing I'm, we haven't seen this in committee or anything, I don't think, but in terms of the memo that says background and purposes, I have to definitely just include Humane Society and other animal care control agencies, and I didn't know.
Yeah, so it took me just a little bit to track, it's a little early in the meeting, but I've gotten there. So, on page 305 of the packet under D, I think is what we're talking about a little bit, as it relates to animal control authority. The way the code was written, it recognized it would be an agency or a department of the county. It hasn't been that for a while, it's been the Humane Society. And so what this is, is just cleaning up the code, recognizing that we can contract with or for those services, and it's not in the sheriff's department. That's the main cleanup associated with this code proposal.
Ms. Brenner.
So, see, what I interpreted was that, that if it's a county, anybody we have a contract with would still be through the county.
And we wanted to, and working with the prosecutor's office, we wanted to clean that code up and be specific to it.
So it's not, oh, I'm sorry, it's not animal shelters or anything to that extent, it's people that are contracted with us currently?
Correct, we currently contract with the Humane Society to provide those services, we have for many years. When we were in discussions with extending and moving forward with the Humane Society contract, which we're currently in negotiations, and have been positive negotiations, it was clear between the two attorneys with the Humane Society and the prosecutor's attorneys that we should go and clean this code up, make sure it recognizes how we actually accomplish it, that it's not through the sheriff's office, but it's a contract with the Humane Society, and so that's what this clarification is there to do.
Any topic you can't speak with authority on?
(laughing).
All right, further discussion. Seeing none, would the Clerk please call the roll?
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Byrd?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Carol Frazer?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sedu?
Yes.
That passes seven zero. Next item up is ordinance proposing modifications of the Watkins County Code 2.27A Aquatic Invasive Species, AB 2019-103, is there a staff report on this? That's fine, okay. Seeing none, is, I'd open the public hearing, if anybody wishes to speak to that, there's nobody signed in. Oh, we do have one, good. And if anybody else wants to speak, please come down, otherwise we'll close the public session after the speaker.
Good evening, honorable council members, my name is Lori Anthony, I live here in Bellingham, I'm also a marine biology student at Western Washington University, and I'm here on behalf of the Surf Rider Club and the Surf Rider Organization in Bellingham to please urge you to approve the AB 2019-133 to support our resident southern orcas.
It's not this.
What am I talking about?
Is it aquatic invasive species, so?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's all right, that'd be a good topic for the open public session.
Maybe.
Thank you. Sorry.
Could be confusing.
Calm down.
You started it. Well, he started it.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the ordinance proposing modifications of the Watkins County Code related to aquatic invasive species? Seeing none, we'll close the public session, what's the will of the council? Mr. Donovan moves approval to this.
Second.
Mr. Byrd seconds, any discussion? Seeing none, would the Clerk please call the roll?
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Byrd?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Carol Frazer?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sedu?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
That passes seven zero. Next item up is an ordinance amending the, sorry, the Unified Fee Schedule to accommodate changes to the Watkins County Code 2.27A Aquatic Invasive Species, this is AB 2019-106. I don't have anybody else, I don't have anybody signed up for this public session, does anybody wish to speak to this? Seeing none, I'll close the public session, what's the will of the council?
Move to approve.
Mr. Donovan moves approval, Mr. Byrd moves seconds, any discussion? Seeing none, would the Clerk please call the roll?
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Byrd?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Carol Frazer?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sedu?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes. That passes seven zero. Next item up is an ordinance amending Watkins County Code Section 1.14, correcting certain precinct boundary lines and precinct maps, AB 2019-121, was there a council, was there a staff report on this? Madam Auditor.
Hello, I'm Debbie Adelstein, Watkins County Auditor, just to explain what we're proposing here, in case you had some doubts about it, where the city of Bellingham and the city of Linden have expanded their annexation of territory around the area, and these proposed maps that we have submitted will be added to the entire packet of the Book of Maps of Watkins County, and we're just moving that we do this. One thing I will mention, that if some, some of you may say, well, you know, why do we have to add so many for this kind of thing, but we always have to keep in mind that the congressional and legislative lines play a factor in this, as well as where the council, the new district council lines are, and the city annexations were done, and this is what accomplishes that. So I would ask that you approve these maps, and that we make the adjustment to the entire Book of Maps, and you'll have an updated copy to keep in your office, and we keep one in ours.
Mr. Byrd?
Out of curiosity, do precincts have to be balanced population-wise as well, similar to districts, or?
No, not specifically, but what we try to do, there is a threshold, you can't have them larger than 1,500, but, you know, it's sort of...
Should we just try to keep them in line with the city boundaries, then?
Yeah, yeah, they have to be a part of that, but they can't cross congressional lines, for instance, so, you know, you've got congressional lines going all over the city of Bellingham, and that's one, you know, some people might have looked at this and say, why did we have to make five, because the city of Bellingham did this, but it just plays into that maze of what's required to do.
So what happens when you expand a precinct, city of Bellingham grows into, say, out towards the airport, and that expands that precinct out, does that shrink like county districts as well, or, I mean?
No, it, the county district lines stay where they are, I mean, so, I mean, yeah, to the extent that it now takes in some of what was county, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, so that precinct is the line for our districts are drawn around the precincts as well, right?
Right, right.
So if it went a mile further out?
Yeah, if they annex, that's county, county land that gets incorporated into the city. Yeah.
Cassidy, thank you.
Ms. Frazer?
Councilmember Byrd had some of the same questions I did, but when would this go into effect if we do agree, if we do?
I think it takes effect in the normal, normal time period that what you allow for when approval is made. It's not talking about going too far down the road, we, we need to have these in place because of when candidates do getting ready for filing fee, the statute requires that we have it done by a certain deadline in order to meet the filing requirements for when candidates file for office. And this is well, we've arranged to propose it now, so that that's well within that range.
Mr. Donovan?
So, I just have a little confusion with the maps, I mean, I totally get what's going on here, but like, so the precinct 135 by the airport is, in the part that's shaded in the old precinct, is the city annexing all of that, or is it just then it flip in the next map, and it's, with the, the new precinct 273, is it taking all of 135, or part of 135? So that's kind of the same question with all of these, it was kind of hard for me to tell, is it, or is part of 135 still staying in the county, and, so I flip?
Well, if it's 135, it's county, if it's a two number, it's a city of Bellingham.
Right, okay, but so the precinct 135 is being annexed, and it's moving to 273, so if I look at the map, it's like, the entire area around the airport, all the way up I-5 to Slater, over to Wind Road?
These maps just show the boundaries of the individual precinct.
Right, and then the next map on the other page, I can't figure out what's the, there's the old precinct, there's the new precinct, how much does the new precinct expand into the old precinct? That's, I'm just curious, I mean, I'm...
Yeah, I don't know how quite to answer that, I'm just going based on, these are the, the maps that, that effectuate what their county council, or their city council passed. So when they, when the, when they do their annexation, and the annexation is made, this is what makes that happen, I mean, this is what shows it on, on a map.
So does all of 135 disappear and become 273?
No, so the first map, the big one?
Yeah.
Is like, everything, right?
Right. Then the second one, that's, they're a different scale, and that's...
So it's just this piece here, that's now?
So is 273 new?
I don't think it's new, 273 is not new, is it, it's just...
That, I, that...
There are different scales, it's hard to tell, but you got color.
No, this is different, this is what they gave out, all the annexation from the city council, the city's done over it, so they just did this piece, which is the two...
Not this whole piece?
Yeah, it's just that little piece.
But I, it's just, it's hard to compare the old maps and the new maps.
It's hard to get, yeah, and then when it probably looks like the scales are slightly differently, you know, sometimes here, like, for instance, it's saying that one maybe have a 3,000 feet measure, and the next one down has a 2,200 measure, so...
Yeah, 400 feet on one, and then 3,000 feet on the other, but anyway, I, I get what's going on.
All I can guarantee is that this is what Public Works has designed for us to be able to say, and based on the city of Bellingham's drawings, that this is the area that it covers, and this is what we need to adopt to put into the entire packet.
Further questions for Madam Auditor?
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll open the public session, I don't have anybody signed up, does anybody wish to speak to this issue? Seeing none, I'll close the public session, what's the will of the council?
Move approval.
Ms. Brenner moves approval, Mr. Buchanan seconds, any discussion? Seeing none, would the Clerk please call the roll?
Tyler Byrd?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Carol Frazer?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sedu?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
That passes seven zero. Next item up is the open public session, during the open session, audience members can speak to the council on any issue not scheduled for public hearing, each speaker should state his or her name for the record, and optionally, optionally include city of residence. Speakers will be given three minutes to address the council, council staff will keep track of time limits, and inform speakers when they have 30 seconds left to conclude your comments. With that, and I just ask that people line up on both podiums, ready to speak, and when the last speaker has finished speaking, if you then proceed to start yourself, so, please, go forward.
See if I do this right here. Good evening, council, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Bob Gay, I'm fifth generation Watkins County resident, I live out east town here, and suburbs of Demming, that's my, my little stick. I came tonight to speak about the open seat on the Planning Commission, specifically on behalf of an applicant for that vacant seat, Rob Bartel. I was really happy to hear that he was interested and applied for the, that vacant seat, though Rob's been a resident here of Watkins County for 20 years, I've only known him for the last five, but I do feel I know him pretty well. When I met him, he was the Safety Committee Chairman for IBW Local 191, and he was hired on staff for Local 19, right, a month after I was, back in 2014, in the fall. And we were coworkers, we attended trainings together, we worked together, he in Skagit County and I in Watkins County. And, so, that went on until January 2016, when he became our Training Director at our training facility. In my time working with Rob, I can say that planning is just a kind of a part of his nature, you know, whether he's an Eagle Scout, you know, he was a contractor, he's been an instructor, a teacher, union representative, he's a business owner, and he's currently, like I said, our Training Director for the Northwest Washington Electrical Joint Apprenticeship and Training Council. Rob oversees the staff, a two clerical, five full-time, and 20 part-time instructors, you know, keeping all the work assignments, class schedules, curriculum, and facilities up to date for our 350 apprentices. In this role, he's also responsible for coordination of continuing education classes for our 1,300 journeymen, there's another 100 telecom techs and lighting fixture maintenance people, and 245 associate members who use our training facility for their continuing education. You know, in addition to the processing of 600 to 700 applicants annually that apply to our apprenticeship, to maintain a, you know, fair and orderly process. Anyway, Rob's someone he works well with others, he's thoughtful, considerate, he's listened to your concerns, and, you know, you can feel confident that he's, he's paying attention. He's been serving on Labor and Industry Technical Advisory Committee for the last couple of years, as assisting in reviewing and making recommendations on proposed electrical...
30 seconds, please.
...code and rules in Washington. And I just want to say that the Planning Commission, like many of the boards and commissions, they could certainly benefit from having labor's voice on it, and if you have looked at Rob's application and his resume, you're going to see that Rob's well qualified to be that voice. You have an opportunity in this appointment to give labor a seat at the table, I really believe you'd have to look long and hard to find a better, more suited commissioner, or applicant than Rob, and I thank you for your time.
Please come down and please line up at the podiums, thank you.
Hello again, honorable council members, as I stated, my name is Lori Anthony, and I'm here on behalf of the Western Chapter of the Surf Rider Foundation, as well as the Northwest Straits Chapter of Surf Rider, and we would love to urge you to please support the AB 2019-133 Act to support the southern resident orca populations. As I'm sure you know, the Salish Sea and the southern resident orca protection is a clear objective of Bellingham and the Surf Rider Foundation, and I, for one, am a marine biology student, and many of my members, that is why we are in Bellingham, because of these orcas, we saw them when we were young, and that is why we are even in this area. Preventing toxic pollution, increasing the Chinook and forage fish habitats and abundance, decreasing vessel traffic noise and disturbances, and improving the safety of oil transportation are all clear ways that our state can protect our Salish Sea, as well as our orcas. And so I would love to urge you to pass the resolution tonight, and show our constituents, as well as our state elected officials, that your support recovering endangered southern resident orcas is, lies with our people in Bellingham. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Hannah, and I would like to talk to you tonight about the benefits of apprenticeship programs in construction. I graduated from Cedro Wollie High School and joined the Union Apprenticeship Program to learn a skilled trade to support myself and my family. The upcoming workforce needs the training in order to help build our future, with the skills and safety that I am learning. Having a local skilled workforce for the future is critical for our continued success as a community, thank you.
In council, my name is Trevor Smith, I'm a resident of Bellingham, as you know, I'm a business agent for the Laborers Union, Local 292, and I'm a 20-year member. I'm here tonight to speak about the benefits of a state-registered apprenticeship program. Our building trades apprenticeships are critical to ensuring the next generation of skilled and trained workers to build the infrastructure that our county needs and will be required in the future. As a graduate of the Laborers Union Apprenticeship myself, I have firsthand knowledge of the benefits of the programs that our building trades apprenticeships provide. These apprenticeships are funded by our members and administered by a joint council of our signatory contractors and our unions. They deliver some of the highest levels of skilled and safe workers out of these programs. I would encourage you guys to look into this, and bringing this around for the, for the county's consideration. One of the things that we're going to need in the future is more workers, more skilled workers, so we don't wind up with this gap where we don't have people who know exactly how to do these jobs, when it comes to infrastructure, when it comes to even just straight building. I mean, you heard from the electrician earlier, that, I mean, they've got like 350 apprentices in their local, we've got like 150 in ours. All the trades have apprenticeships, it's, it's something that's going to be needed more and more as we move on, sir.
Are you, are you asking us for something, or is there a program coming forward at some point, or that we can support, or?
I'd be happy to provide you with some details, stuff that other cities and localities here in the state of Washington have, have done.
That'd be great.
I can email that to the council, I'd be more than happy to. And as a separate item, while I still have a couple of seconds, I'd like to express our support for Rob Bartlett for the vacant Planning Commission seat, he's a member of the IBW, as you know, and we think he'd make a fantastic addition, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And if anybody else wishes to speak, please line up.
My name is Wendy Harris, and many of you have heard me many times come down here to advocate on behalf of different issues, and tonight I'm here to advocate on behalf of myself. I have been constructively evicted from my house, and I have no place to go, and I don't know what to do. The thought of going back to the house I was in is just giving me post-traumatic stress. I have been writing to you guys, and to other people at the cleaner agency in the county for almost three years, everybody's ignored me. All I've been asking for is enforcement of my legal rights for laws that already exist, and I can't get even that. And the straw that broke the camel's back was, there's a, I don't know what the status is, almost a 30-acre fire that was going to happen not too far from my house, I asked to see the fire permit, and I was given a permit that was one page, for three piles to be burned one at a time, and the date had expired, and so I called, I emailed back and said it was, this must be wrong, and I was told, nope, it's not, this is what we do, and it's, it's just ongoing, and they wouldn't tell me when the fire was going to happen, or what the land was being used for, and I had already inhaled some of it, enough to get so sick that the proprietor of a store I was at had to physically help me get to my car. So, I, I am attached to an oxygen machine that has to be plugged into electricity, and since I've moved where I am, my ability to breathe has declined by half, so I'm, it takes more oxygen tanks for me to go anywhere, which has reduced my mobility, and even my ability to leave the area. So, I want to know what I'm supposed to do, because I've complied with the law, and the law's not being enforced. I looked at, there are seven regional air agencies?
30 seconds, please.
And there are two standard laws that are at an issue here, one is the feasible alternative, you are not allowed to burn in the unincorporated county if there are feasible alternatives. And there's a list of things, it used to be on the county website that were just taken down, and then the other thing is, the nuisance laws that provide the right instantly if somebody is sick to have a law put out, and I have been giving my pulmonary functions to the county medical director, as well as a couple of notes from my doctor, saying how dangerous this is, this is all being ignored. So please, I don't know if this is politically motivated, or if this is how you treat everybody, but, I mean, I'm going to die, and I don't know what to do, I don't know where to go, I've, I've called all the different resources I know of in the county, and I've been told because I don't qualify as low enough income that they can't help me, so, please, somebody
Heather Cattad in Bellingham, Washington.
Heather Cattad in Bellingham, Washington. My purpose in coming to council tonight on this freezing cold February night is to share gratitude for being welcomed into this community. Before I arrived, I lived and worked all over America, including states with the coldest winter temperatures. And as a young person, I learned how to survive in unheated shelters and to purchase land. When I first arrived in Bellingham 30 years ago, I was hired as the first coordinator of Maple Alley and Soup Kitchen, whose mission was to welcome our neighbors who were experiencing homelessness and severe mental illness. Then I worked as a decade as a clinician and counselor at a local health clinic, again advocating for clients who experienced severe brain disorders labeled mentally ill. I have seen the unsheltered population in this state grow and include more citizens each year. This year, towards the end of January, I saw an increase in people standing or sitting or lying alone on our sidewalks. Many were not dressed for the cold winter weather and seemed disoriented. For the last three-plus weeks, I've been part of an independent volunteer citizens outreach group that has answered the call to compassion, answered the call to humanitarian action to reach out face-to-face to our unsheltered neighbors and assist them in finding transportation to safe shelter. These unsheltered neighbors are the salt of the earth. They are resilient. The ones I have met have treated me with greater kindness and respect than many of my house neighbors. It was very cold and lonely being out on the streets late at night doing service. There were no public buildings open to warm my hands or to use a safe bathroom, until 11 nights ago, when I went into the county-level warming room to thank councilmen and women Barry and Barbara for their commitment and compassion to volunteering and opening the warming center. I speak for many friends and family, both housed and unsheltered, when I say, we thank you for this winter warming center.
Thirty seconds, please.
We thank you, each council member, for the hours you have volunteered in the center, for the hours of your time as public servants attending meetings and reading pages of proposals. Thank you for your service. My ask is twofold. Short-term, due to the freezing nights being forecast through Wednesday, February 6th, consider extending the warming center till then or beyond. Long-term, help our local community create pathways to create permanent rural and urban small villages that contain tiny homes with shared kitchen and bathrooms to provide needed shelter. Thank you.
My name is Bob Burr. I'm from the Berkeley District of Bellingham, and I'm here mainly to thank you as well. I thank you for moving the public comment section up earlier in the agenda. I was not aware of it, but I was at the Watkin Democrats meeting earlier tonight that's still going on, and they told me that Barbara Brenner was instrumental in moving it forward, so I thank you in particular, Barbara. When I last spoke to you, I asked you to join other cities and states in declaring a climate emergency. Since I last talked to you, there's been new studies that have come aboard, mainly not relating to the United States or Watkin County, but to what's going on in this planet that is our home. We have learned that the Himalaya glaciers, or as my British wife says, glaciers, are melting at an unparalleled rate, and by the end of this century, there will be massive displacement. We've also learned that the same situation is going on in the Andes. I don't think it's a stretch, although there hasn't been a recent study to say the same situation will go on in the glaciers at Mount Baker. And that will severely affect the water supply that we have out in the county. So, we've also learned that the insect population is declining at a dramatic rate, and we know-
Seconds, please.
We know that the insect population supports all of the agriculture and life that we have on this planet. So, once more, I would ask you to declare a climate emergency. Thank you.
We have three more, we have three more people if there's anybody else who wants to speak after this. So, Ms. Gilfelin, please move down. Just be ready to speak when Mr. Ellis is finished.
Patrick Ellis, 4825 Alderson Road, Birch Bay. I came to say thanks for opening the warming center. Why are the porta-potties outside? There's restrooms in there. It's just me. Also, the young lady that came up earlier, I'm so glad that she spoke. She hit it right on the head. She did a really good job. I agree with everything she said, and Bob, everything Bob said.
Wow. An agreeable mood.
Oh, I can be obstinate, too. But I'll just end there. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
I'm Joy Gilfillan, Bellingham, Washington. Thank you. Thank you for opening the warming shelter. That was probably the single most happy news that I've gotten in years of fighting for the vulnerable population that we deal with in Watkin County. I think it is a shame that our county does not appropriately listen to the problems that we have with air quality control, and I will leave that there because I have much more to talk about, which is, well, I do think that someone on the Watkin County Council needs to work with Wendy to figure out what can be done to solve the air quality problems that she's dealing with in the county. She's served the county for a very long time as a watchdog, and I think we owe that to her. With regards to AB 2019-043, I completely oppose it. This is the law that has to do with repealing the laws governing standards of care for, or standards for the Watkin County Jail. I oppose it on three grounds. One of them is, I think it's inappropriate to repeal a law that was put in place to protect the vulnerable citizens who occupy the inside of the Watkin County Jail. I think it's inappropriate to repeal it for the benefit of the sheriff to be able to write the laws and give control of the oversight of that jail to him. That's what it appears the way that the ordinance has been prepared to do. I think that it's inappropriate to give that kind of control to the sheriffs because he works within the executive branch. If the county council cedes the power to write the laws for this county to the sheriff, then you're actually being affected and are affecting the balance of power between the legislative and the administrative part of this county, and you're actually compromising your ability as a legislature to be able to protect the people who are being impacted by the violations of laws that do happen inside the Watkin County Jail. I'm extremely concerned that the sheriff is now admitting that he suspended the laws back, clear back, in 2006, or when the county began to get overcrowded, and he used the excuse of the law to, and his inability to follow the law, which had remedies in there for him that required him to reduce the overcrowding in the jails.
Thirty seconds, please.
I brought this to the county's attention quite a few years ago. It was not responded to. The sheriff did not follow the law, and now he's asking to be put in control of writing the laws to take care of it. I object to repealing the law. I think you should keep it in force. Secondly, I think the council needs to take the authority and the responsibility to write replacement laws that in fact protect the citizens inside that jail. They are 100% vulnerable.
Time.
And then send the rest of it to the Incarceration Prevention Task Force to work with the sheriff to rewrite their ordinances. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Eddie Urie. I'm resident of Bellingham. I just also want to express gratitude to the council for taking action when the issue came before you two weeks ago to open up the warming shelter. I know that wasn't easy. It's been a logistical challenge to make it happen and make it happen quickly, and it's, just want you to know that it's well-needed and it's helping. It's really, it's really, really good. I spent a few shifts volunteering there last week, saw it firsthand. The nights I was there, we had between 15 and 25 residents, and, you know, these were men, some of whom I talked to at length, who were, you know, the most respectful, together, well, you know, clean, picked up after themselves, completely orderly, but were basically unable to go to the mission or drop-in center for reasons of being banned, or for just basically feeling so uncomfortable from their past experiences there that they did not feel like they could, they could go there, even if, you know, the ban was lifted under emergency circumstance. Now, this is not meant to disparage the mission or the work they do year-round, serving many, many people, and they are doing great work. It's not about trashing on them, it's just acknowledging that there is, there is population, not even just, you know, folks who are most on the fringe, but just, there's a, there's a large population out there, or of however many, that can't go to the mission. And so by providing that service, a backup there, you're really filling a need. And as, you know, temperatures are expected to, you know, stay low, especially at night with wind chill far below freezing, there's a need for it to continue. I know there's a lot of challenges in staffing it. You're doing this without adequate funding, on the fly, and, you know, all of you have put your own personal time and energy into staffing it, and that's commendable. Other members of, you know, senior officials and managers in the county departments, who I volunteered with as well, it's, it's really fantastic what you're all putting into it. But I think the fact that it's, you know, that there's a requirement that there has to be a county official there at all time is a little bit of a barrier to being able to fill these shifts. I could say that if it wasn't for that limitation, we could fill the shifts for weeks. I have experience in, you know, organizing volunteers for things, probably some other folks in the room here do, too. We can, we can fill those shifts with volunteers for as many weeks as we need to, as long as there is a need with temperatures below freezing at night. So, I'm happy to help with that. I'm happy to volunteer again. I'm sure some of you are, too, but, yeah, there's a capacity issue here. I understand that. If there's any way to lift that requirement. And then the other piece there is that I recognize there is still a need for people who are not men, who, you know, this is a men's-only warming shelter, and I know, I saw that, you know, there's other people out there on the streets in the evening wandering around who couldn't get in there. So, just say whatever you can do in this matter. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Urie, thank you for your, for the shifts you did.
Yes, thanks, Eddie.
Well, thank you, Heather, too, because she, there's been other people who-
I'm sorry, Heather.
But thanks, Eddie.
I wish to thank you, too, but I hadn't, I hadn't seen you there, so thank you, too. Was there anybody else who served at the shifts?
I don't know if everybody wants to put their hand up and let you know, so.
Anyway, I just, for those who did serve, I wanted to thank you.
You had some great volunteers.
Sorry, please, please.
Hi, hello, council. My name is Catherine Gring, and I live in Bellingham, and I just wanted to say a couple things concerning the sheriff's ability to change the rules and procedures in the jail. As far as I can tell, there's a question of whether his rules and the changes will be open to the public, and I think it's really important that somebody in such a powerful position, working with people who are so powerless, really needs to be open to the public, all the rules and procedure changes. And not only open to the public, but accessible, and not buried in pages of legalese or in some 50-page memo, you know, retired somewhere. I think that it would be good for the city council and the public to know exactly what the rules and procedures are there. From listening to what the sheriff said, I listened to a tape that was online. It sounded like the rules and procedures relating to the jail, he almost sounded to me like he thought they would change almost daily. I mean, he's, it sounded like just this constant churn of rules and procedures depending on what the state did or what the federal did, and that you, as a council, were going to look at his changes once a year. I don't think that's adequate, to be honest. I also, lastly, feel like there should be some limit on the ad hoc changes to the rules and procedures, because one person having so much power, I think, is dangerous. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to speak?
Good evening. Irene Morgan, Watkin County. I, too, want to thank all of you who were involved in the homeless and all the people that served the homeless and for opening the shelters. I and a group of friends, 10 years ago, brought information to the city and suggested several things, and I know government moves slowly, but this is really disheartening to see how long it's taken to actually have some movement, so I truly thank you. And, and as far as Wendy Harris and her position and her conditions, I think you should do what you can for her, and don't wait 10 years, because this is imperative that she have, that she be respected with her health conditions. I'm here actually to speak about the sheriff and his, and his need to have the 40 pages of the standards for correctional facilities totally done away with. I saw all of the lines through this document online. I have to say, it really shocked me to see how one person or one group of people can actually do away with our laws to that degree and replace it with a couple of pages of what he wants to do. I absolutely do not support the revocation of these standards. We have very vulnerable people in our jail system. We need to protect our incarcerated citizens, for many of them are legally innocent. They are there, not ever yet being convicted of anything. The sheriff's ordinance, to me, I feel an arrogance about the stature that he holds, and from my perspective, it's criminal how he wants to take all of the safeguards away from the folks that are in there. Like I said, many of them are legally innocent. It's a civil rights violation, and he's, he's already admitted to violating the Washington State laws since 2006.
Thirty seconds, please.
I think this is subversive and undermining the public trust, and I started the coalition, the Restorative Community Coalition, then the Watkin County Reentry Coalition in 2006. I knew then there was something wrong. I'd been snooping around the community for about 20 years at that time. I knew there was something wrong, I didn't know what it was. Well, now I know what the what is, and it's this kind of behavior that I knew was underneath all this, and I knew it here. I knew it in my gut. And now-
Time.
-I can actually say that this is not where, I believe, our community needs to be going. And I was told to leave this subject alone in 2007 and 2008. Irene, leave them alone. They're doing a good job. Well, if this is a good job, something's really wrong. They're doing a good job. Well, if this is a good job, something's really wrong because this is not where our community needs to go. And it will bankrupt our county somewhere down the line. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak in the open public session? Seeing none, I'll close the open public session.
Mr. Chair, can I make this brief statement?
Please.
I wanted to give a shout out to the apprenticeship program and all the people who've been here because this is very dear to me. When I was dean at Bellingham Tech, I managed all the, you know, the, the labor, carpenters, sheet metal, IBW, IEC, and machinist, a few more because they run through the technical college of the education part of that. And I was very familiar. But the, the shout out is, I'm very pleased to see that people are talking. We had 600 applications and we had 300 apprentices because early 2000 to 2008, I mean, people had like 30, 50. And, and I went to all the county schools at that time to go and talk to high school students that, okay, I mean, this is the other 40-year degree. And I think a lot of people didn't understand what the other 40-year degree was. It was the 40-year apprenticeship. And, and I worked with Intalcot. So I'm so pleased to see the numbers growing in that field that there are hundreds of kids in the pipeline because this pipeline takes 20 years to fill and 20 years to empty. And that line was totally empty in early 2000. So I'm very pleased to, to hear that, that there are more kids are coming into that. Thank you. Thank you for your work.
And I'd just like to support Mr. Sidhu's comments. As a former apprentice myself, the opportunity to, to gain a trade was very valuable. And my, my particular trade was, the nearest equivalent here would be HVAC mechanic. And it's, apprenticeships have been a time honored way, particularly for those who come from humble circumstances to, to change their circumstances for themselves and their family and their descendants. So I'm very supportive of the idea. With that, we now move on to natural resources.
The Sleep Deprived Natural Resources Committee met this morning at 9:30 to discuss a resolution requesting support for Washington State House and Senate bills related to pollution prevention, increasing habitat for fish abundance, protection of southern resident orca whales from vessels, and improving the safety of oil transportation. And the committee recommended a vote 2-0 with one abstain to recommend this to council.
It's been moved for approval, discussion. Ms. Brenner.
Okay. I totally support the intent of this. However, I asked a number of questions today, and I'm not going to go back through them all because it was a long time doing it at the meeting today. And nobody had the answers to this. And I'm really disturbed about the part with using, having to put more vessels on the water when, you know, to ship the, to be able to ship fossil fuel of a certain size, when they're supposed to, I mean, virtually, none of the problems happen in transit. They're all happening when they do happen where it's moored. You don't need a tug vessel when they're moored. And, but that will add more vessels to the water, which to me seems like it flies in the face of what we feel like we want to do by cutting back on any pollution. And I also believe that, one of the things I found out was that this task force was supposed to go till next June. And suddenly in January, the governor decides he just wants it done. So they bypassed a lot of the work from stakeholders and other people who have a lot to say, I think. And by the way, the, the oil company stakeholders were supportive of this whole initiative. But this, the way this has come out, and I know there's amendments. I've been told today there were amendments to this, but we don't have them. And all we have is what we have. And maybe you guys can feel comfortable supporting something that isn't, I don't think is done right at, correctly at this time, and especially something where I don't get to look at everything. I mean, the devil's always in the details. What I want to do is try to have something come forward that is productive for all the interests, which could have been. I would, I move that we take out House Bill 1578 and Senate Bill 5578 because nobody can give me a reason to add more vessels to the, to the water, doing something that even DOE didn't believe that, at the time, when they were first talking about this, didn't believe that it was going to make any significant difference at all. So, but it will make a significant difference in the cost to, to certain businesses. And it also, there was a part in here too that said that commercial fishing vessels are not exempt either. That kind of disturbs me too. So I like the, the intent of what you're trying to do here, but those two, the House bill and the Senate bill, I think are actually going to cause more harm than good. And I'd like to see them out. Also, the person who made the comments, maybe you could stay till afterwards because I have some questions in some of the other bills, and nobody here could answer them at the time. Maybe you can. That'd be great. Thanks.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Oh.
Seeing none, that motion fails. Further discussion.
I said, wait a minute, what?
Yeah. Are you talking about, we didn't have a second to, earlier.
Yeah, I thought you were talking about-
No, because it made it out of committee. You don't need a second. If it, this, any bill, any, any resolution that comes out of committee-
Okay, so what was this motion you just made?
You made a motion to amend.
Yeah.
And I asked for a second to the motion to amend.
I thought you were asking for a second to your motion to put it on the floor. I'll second-
He seconded it.
So you're seconding her motion to amend, or you say?
I'll second the motion to amend.
Okay, fine. We have a motion. We have a motion and a second motion made by Brenner, seconded by Bird. Discussion. Mr. Bird.
I, I wasn't a part of the committee meeting where Ms. Brenner asked her questions, nor am I aware of what they were. But from listening to her, I, I had some of the same questions and concerns. In theory, I support this as well. However, it does concern me the same idea, putting more vessels into the water that are going to be polluting it. We know that there, there's a lot of research about the sound that vessels generate and the effect it has on whales. Adding more vessels to the system adds more sound. It adds more pollution. Those are statistical points with a lot of research, a lot of data that we can point to. Can someone point to the opposite to where any data that would show that adding those would actually prevent oil spills or, or prevent spills and be more beneficial? I mean, is there data that contradicts this?
Mrs. Sidhu.
And I, I learned a little bit about it, and I, I'm at the threshold of not knowing enough, but still making a comment. But I, I'll make a comment. What, what I heard was that when the big ship comes and it's on its own power, has a different noise and level and everything, what they're trying to do is, is have the large ship turn off their engines and be towed the last, whatever, three or four miles by a smaller tug to, to lure that noise and everything. It has, it's not about the spill or anything. I think the issue was what you rightly said, that the noise level and everything. So what they're trying to do, that a large ship with 5,000 horsepower engine, and that is working on its own power and coming, it's a bigger disturbance than a smaller tug, which is actually towing it to, and they can change the path or whatever. So that's what I heard now. I, don't quote me that I'm an authority on that. But that's what I have read and I heard, that the reason for them to use tugs, not the large ships on their own. So you can make your own conclusions.
Ms. Brenner.
Well, and I heard that the small tugs have huge engines with big horsepower because of the work they have to do. So it's kind of like not only trading one for the other noise or sound wise, but it definitely has to do with other types of pollution that you're, with two, with two vessels instead of one. And I don't think that should be lost on, you know, just saying one, one part of it rather than the other.
With my engineering, sorry, can I say something? With my engineering background, I can tell you the tug engines are nowhere near the engines of the large ships. I mean, they are like having a little skip boat and, and a large thing. They, they're not comparable if we say, oh, you are putting the tug and has the same size engine like a ship would. That's not a comparable thing.
Then I just want to respond to that. Because he got to respond to me. Well, I want to respond back to what he said.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right, except that when the ships are going in those areas, they already have to reduce their whole, the whole thing they do, including the engine, including the sound. So it ends up being a wash on that front.
Aye.
Mr. Bird.
I, I do know someone who's researching this kind of thing up in Canada right now and, and has a grant for that, for that purpose. And they were telling me that the tugs, because they're so poorly maintained up there at least, that they're actually causing higher levels of pollution because they're just, they put the least amount of, of money and effort into keeping them going as possible. And it's causing a lot of problems for them there. I don't know. I, I do think, I mean, there is data here that says that we need to change something. Is there someone we could ask to, I don't know when this is going to get voted on, but is there someone we could ask to come talk to us that actually knows what's going on with the bill in more detail before we support it?
Well, we did today. We had a representative from resources who's familiar with the legislation came and answered questions.
She couldn't answer the questions I asked. She taught, she said there's debate about the tug thing too. And she's not-
Is there someone that can answer the questions then, or has more, I'm sorry?
Yeah. I, I was going to say that I think the best course is we should reach out to our state representatives. We have six representatives, two senators, four state reps, who are actually directly impacting this thing. And they would have more information and more resources to be able to clarify. All we are saying is, it is a good thing to protect the orcas and, and, and please do something. We are really not saying that, you know, whatever, they're going to do the real debate, real decisions, and the amendments and everything. I think the best course of action is that we should be on the phone or, or write them that, ask questions so that, or make them aware of our concerns. They are the ones who are really doing it. We, we, we are just giving it a sport. That's all we're doing.
Ms. Brenner and then Mr. Bird.
Yeah. First of all, I have no intention of taking the word of politicians, period. What I was hoping he meant was that we're talking about someone who's an expert, who's been in the business, who knows how to, you know, who knows about ships and boat, and tugs and all that stuff. That would be fine, but not, especially not the people who wrote this. They've already got a bias. So, yeah, I just, I would like to, I, I think that's a good idea, but I would definitely like to have somebody who is in the business of building those ships, building the tugs, whatever, or engineering them, something like that.
Mr. Donovan, sorry, Mr. Bird then, Mr. Donovan.
If we wrote something to that extent of, of what Mr. Councilmember Sidhu was saying, like we support the whales and the killer whale population and trying to support that in a way that creates more economic health form or environmental health form or something without supporting specific regulation.
About these particular bills.
We all know how they work down there. I mean, you stuff stuff in, they're, I mean, they don't review things all the time. I mean, we don't, it bothers me not knowing exactly what we're voting on or asking them to support and how they change things. I do support the idea. I just, I don't want to support something else that I'm not aware of at the same time. So if, if you're going to move forward with this, I'll abstain as well. But I would prefer someone actually coming and telling us exactly what they're doing with this bill and, and why and what the data is for it. So it knows the relevant points and can answer the questions.
Mr. Donovan.
What was the motion?
The motion was, Ms. Brenner's motion to amend, which was to strike the last line of the-
House Bill 1578 and Senate Bill 5578, which was about the tugs.
Let me get back to that. I was just trying to get back to the motion.
Oh, okay. Right. Any further discussion on the motion to amend? Mr. Bird.
I guess I do have one more question. Has anyone here actually read all of the bills
I did.
from front to back that are listed here?
Front to back.
Like AB HB 1194, 1578.
All four bills, 60 pages.
There's five, six, seven, eight bills here, the ones, two.
Well, however many there were, I read every word. And I got, I had questions on almost every page.
Mr. Bird, I read all of them too, before I included them.
You told me today you hadn't.
No, no, I said I hadn't raised, I hadn't anticipated the questions. You hadn't done the research. I had done the research on the questions I had.
But you couldn't answer my questions, which means you still didn't know quite a bit of stuff because it was a lot of stuff I asked.
You were asking me questions about what was behind the language.
No, I asked you what it meant, not what was behind it, but what it meant. I was very specific.
You're entitled to interpretation.
Well, I guess I should be more able to interpret my own questions than you because I asked them.
Did you, is there further discussion on the motion to amend? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to amend, say aye.
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 Opposed? No.
And we were on such a roll earlier today where we were all agreeing on stuff.
It fails four to two.
Could have had a unanimous resolution here.
Back to the old normal.
It fails four to two. And with, four to two with Brenner and Bird opposed and Donovan abstaining. Now we're back to the main motion. And just to make sure it was read into the record correctly, it's a resolution requesting support for Washington State House and Senate bills related to pollution prevention, increasing habitat and fish abundance, protection of southern resident orca whales from vessels, and improving the sa- safety of oil transportation, AB 29 dash 133. Any further discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, all in favor, Mr. Donovan, I'll be quicker.
Okay, I'm going to abstain. I support these bills. I support the governor's task force to, for the orca recovery stuff. I've personally signed a letter with other elected officials in Puget Sound, I think Mr. Buchanan signed this as well, supporting these efforts. I just personally didn't like the process when there was a bill that I opposed that we were signing up to support by a resolution with the well 1691 stuff. Didn't like how that went. So I'm going to be consistent. Can I abstain then? I'm abstaining now. But I, but I do support this, and I thank the folks from the Surf Rider Foundation for speaking out in favor of it.
I'm lost on that one. I apologize.
Well, you were, I kind of got in this like shouting match with the last bill that we did, resolution to Olympia on that was the, you know, over the water thing. And I, I'm just, I don't think that was productive. I'm just not wanting to engage with folks in Olympia in terms of them telling them what to do about specific legislation in this matter, so.
I know what you're talking about now. I got it. Okay, sorry. You went way farther back than I thought.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So Mrs. Donovan is promoting abstinence?
Absence only education. Yeah, right. But let the record show.
Further discussion on the main motion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
So who, the, who is opposed? You and you're abstaining, correct, Mr. Donovan?
I'm abstaining as well.
You're abstaining. So two abstaining. So that passes four to, four to one, to two abstentions. So with, with Brenner, Brenner opposed, Bird and Donovan abstaining. Okay. Four, one, two. Okay.
I don't think that's going to vary.
Finance, Mr. Sidhu.
Finance. All right. Okay, we have the five items. The first item is AB 2019 dash 135, request authorization for county executive to enter into a grant agreement between Watcom County and Department of Ecology, DOE, for Water Quality Combined Financial Assistance Grant Agreement, WQC dash 20- WQC dash 2017 dash WHCOPW dash 00030 for the Agate Bay Stormwater Improvements Project in the amount of $552,548.62. This received 2-0 vote. Mr. Bird came a little later and ISO move for approval.
It's been moved for approval, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that passes seven zero.
That was an ordinance, wasn't it? Oh, wait, sorry, wrong page.
Okay, so the, the next item is AB 2019 dash 124, Ordinance Amending 2019 Watcom County Budget Request Number Two in the amount of $4,901,742. This also received 2-0 vote. Mr. Bird excused and ISO move for approval.
It's been moved for approval, any discussion? Ms. Brenner.
Yeah, um, we had this discussion earlier, but we're being told the same thing on the, on the, um, the envelope of the courthouse now that we were told however few many years ago. And it was a disaster then. No, this is part of the budget request, it's both, it's both. It's the budget request and the, so I'm just gonna do it once and tell you. I was gonna, I was thinking almost of voting no, but I like who, who, I like who in Public Works is gonna be doing it. I have a lot more trust for them than I did for the person who was in charge of it last time. But I still, I, I have a real problem thinking that the, these, this kind of money, which is a lot, but isn't near what options one and two are, are gonna really make, really get it done. So I'm gonna abstain in deference to the Public Works people who I do trust. But because I am not comfortable, I, I think this is gonna end up costing us just as much again.
Okay, further discussion? So, yes, Mr. Bird?
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna jump on the same topic. The, uh, this dollar amount I'm, I'm okay with it. It did bother me, option one and two, where we were talking about thirty million dollars or fifty million dollars.
Twenty-eight, thirty-three, yeah.
It's, when I was in Colorado, what, last week? The, uh, the biggest building they had, the second highest building, only because one had like this giant spear where they always. This one, actually to the top, it was a hundred thousand plus square feet. It was enormous. The building cost a hundred and forty million to build, brand new today, downtown, prime property, Denver. And I'm like, how could that be a hundred and forty million in this? It's gonna cost us thirty-three million to wrap a building? I mean, my mind is exploding right now at the concept. So I'm happy we're going with the seven million dollar choice. It seems like, okay, maybe someone's got, there's some common sense there. But the, the other two, I, I just feel like we're getting gouged by the contractors, so, yeah.
Mrs. Brenner.
Yeah, but if you look at the fine print, this is for doing ongoing stuff and maintenance. And, and that's what they told us last time. And, and they said, oh, this is gonna do it. And we have had leaking and mold and everything almost since the day they did it. And I'm amazed somebody, nobody's gotten, broken a leg or falling over or something on the floor there with that stupid terrazzo that's like this and all the other stuff that's wrong with this building. So, um, I'm just, I got an attitude about it, so I admit it.
Further discussion? Seeing none with the clerk, please call the roll.
Todd Donovan? Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Scott Paul Sado?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Abstain.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
That passes six to zero with Ms. Brenner abstaining. Next item up is an ordinance, oh, sorry, that's Mr. Bird, Sado, that's for you.
Okay, the next item is AB 2019 dash 128, Ordinance Amending Courthouse Building Envelope Project Budget as established through the ordinance 2014 dash 085 third request in the amount of $4.7 million for a total project budget of $7,377,809. This also received 2-0 vote in the committee and ISO move for approval.
Been moved for approval, any discussion? Mr. Donovan.
I guess this is a follow-up question from a header earlier today. So the, the EDI money, the Economic Development Initiative money that we have some set aside for these sort of public facilities, in, in the packet, it's referred to as the Public Utilities Improvement Fund, that's the same thing as EDI? Okay, but is, that's the pool of money that doesn't come out of the competitive process? Or let the record show that the deputy executors is, is.
They can say yes.
Not exec, yes, okay.
I just wanted to correct that, that Mr. Bird had come to the meeting by this time and it was 3-0 vote. Just to, to be clear in the record.
Further discussion? Seeing none with the clerk, please call the roll.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Scott Paul Sado?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Abstaining for the same reason.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
That passes seven, six, zero with one abstention, Ms. Brenner.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, this is using the budget for the same, so this is kind of the same thing as the last vote. It's about the envelope of the courthouse.
The next item is AB 2018-137, Resolution Respectfully Requesting That Watcom County Prosecutor Ask the Washington State Attorney General to Review and Update Opinions Previously Provided Related to the Eligibility of County Council Members and Commissioners to Be Appointed to Weakened Legislative Positions. We had a robust discussion on this and we had a 2-0 vote on this. 3-0? You've approved finally, okay, I know, I'm forgetting now. So anyways, I moved, I saw move for approval.
We move for approval, any discussion? Ms. Brenner.
Okay, I'm in a better mood this evening, but I'm still really upset about this. And I really don't believe that anybody who has a special in should be voting on this. And to me, anybody who's on a council or commission which votes, even if they abstain personally, they're still part of a group which can bring in undue influence and all kinds of things that could cause people to, to vote for them so that they'll get along better and that they might get them to vote for something for them on a future thing. And I, I can see where this could look, it looks to me like undue influence. And I don't, I think it's perfectly okay if somebody resigns from their position in order to be considered. That would be great and that's how it is now, and I think that's the way it should stay. And I want to say I completely agreed with Councilmember Frazee's concerns that it was crazy that they didn't nominate the, the people who, I mean, they didn't, yeah, nominate the people who were put in the, the list as people to be considered. I've never heard of any such thing and it was bizarre that, that one person gets nominated and then they vote on that person before they can nominate other people, which I've never heard of such a thing. So I didn't like that, but this has nothing to do with that. This has to do with somebody being an elected official sworn to do, to serve the public. This isn't a job, this is supposed to be public service. And to, while they're supposed to be doing that, looking ahead to be, being something else. I don't think it's right. I don't care what an attorney, the old Attorney General's opinion said it's not right, so fine. To get it changed just because somebody wants it changed, not, I mean, you could say, oh, it's just for clarification. Well, this is all partisan stuff, we're supposed to be nonpartisan. This really doesn't have anything to do with, as far as I'm concerned, with county council business. And I don't think we should be spending time on it.
Further discussion, Ms. Frazee?
Yes, I just want to say I am going to support this resolution because I think it's a better way and shows democracy and allows everyone to be a part of it. I did not like how the, how he selected the 40th Senator, how he appointed that. I don't think, I don't think the people were represented well. Yeah, I don't think, I think the way it happened, everyone in our county wasn't represented in the 40th. So with this resolution, at least everyone will be allowed to be in the game and then we can choose.
Mrs. Sado.
Yeah, I think that just getting an opinion and is thirty years ago, the opinion was, the previous opinion is. And, and the opinion may just stand the same, that we still agree with the opinion which was thirty years ago. So this is not really influencing and asking them to change their opinion, we're just reconfirming. And thirty years, the generations change, you know? So, and the second part, I just want to say what Carol has said is that I was in that meeting like everybody else. And, and when they announced the first name, and I raised my hand to say that let's nominate all three people. That's why how we normally do even board appointments. We nominate all three people and then they go through that, who you vote for, and then you say who got the most votes. If there's a tie, and then we take the tie people and do it again. And that was the most surprising and unprofessional way it got done. And I was upset because I actually tried to stop that thing. And they said, I thought then after this, they're gonna nominate the next person and count their votes. And they said, no, this is it. They counted the votes and they said, yes, it's done. So I am fairly upset about that as well, that there was no indication beforehand. They did not describe how they're going to do that. But that's besides the point, that has nothing to do with what we are asking, yes.
Mr. Donovan, then Ms. Brenner.
I'm trying to look at this as beyond the 40th and 42nd district thing. And it's, it's, I mean, there was, it's, it's, and I appreciate Ms. Brenner's worry about, you know, the potential undue influence of, I could see that, especially on like a three-member council or something, you know, where that, that would be a worry. But I guess my bigger or equally, equal worry is the undue influence of the state party committees being able to somewhat arbitrarily say who can be a candidate for office. And this personally goes back to work I've done on behalf of the Secretary of State's office, defending the blanket primary and the top two primary against the parties' desire to just be able to kind of carte blanche say who they want to be a candidate or not. And since that 1980, whatever, turned general's opinion, there has been case law that I think could lead to a different interpretation of this. If we get that interpretation, yeah, like Mr. Sado said, it could be the same, it could be different. We can't make, even if we have that interpretation, we can't make the parties do it. It would, it would probably come to litigation to, to force the parties to respond to, to the AG's opinion. But I, I would like to know how the parties would respond if the Attorney General says, yeah, you know, the world has changed, it's not 1985. There are these rights that have been recognized for people to be able to stand as a candidate in a party, whether the party approves of them or not. So it's, it's actually, it's really kind of fascinating area of, of law that I think we could use some clarity from. So that's why I'm supporting it.
Ms. Brenner.
Well, except you guys are going on and on and on about the parties. I don't belong to any party, I'm a, a nonpartisan. This office is supposed to be nonpartisan. We're not supposed to be getting into that. I mean, it was kind of weird we had to do this at all, what we did. But in answer to Councilmember Frazee's comments, this doesn't, will not make it any fairer at all. They still get to pick who they want. Even if Mr. Brown was allowed to have his name in there, they didn't have to pick him. They just didn't have to pick him. And if they did it the same way they're doing it, they would have just done the first person and voted and that's how they would have kept doing it. That's the problem, not this. So I'm sorry that, you know, I, I have a real problem with this. No matter who it was about, I have a very big problem with giving people any kind of potential appearance of fairness problem, and this will definitely do that. Or it will make this council look like that's what we're up to.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That passes six to zero with Ms. Brenner opposed. Mr. Sado, sorry?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, sorry, six one, six one. Six one with Ms. Brenner opposed.
Okay, the next item is AB 2019 dash 126, Resolution Amending the 2019 Flood Control Zone District and Subzones Budget, Request Number Two in the amount of $90,659, Council Acting as the Watcom County Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors. It's received 3-0 vote and ISO move for approval.
It's been moved for approval, any discussion? Seeing none, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Scott Paul Sado?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes, on a resolution?
Yeah, this is a resolution.
Flood Control Zone District.
What?
A flood control zone.
That's right, okay, gotcha.
Barbara, was that a yes, I'm sorry?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
That passes seven zero. Next item up is council, council appointments to boards, commissions and committees. And the first item up is an appointment to the Watcom County Planning Commission. Applicants must reside in Council District Two. Applicants are Robert Bartel, Rhea Bordean, Bob Bird, James Hanson, Tui Nguyen. The Planning Commission assists, assists in the Planning and Development Services Department to carry out its duties, which include helping prepare and execute comprehensive plan and making recommendations for adoptions of official controls and/or amendments. This is AB 2019 dash 127, Mr. Donovan.
Move to nominate, all.
They moved to nominate all, do I have a second?
Second.
I'll just try and get, you're, try and get what you're doing with your hand. Okay.
I missed something here.
For, for clarity, he's got a, he's got a rubber ball on his hand.
Oh, I know, he's had it all day, you didn't know that? Every meeting.
Yeah.
Anyway, sorry.
I'm not sure, it's good for you, right?
Okay, so all five members have been nominated. Does anybody wish to speak to any of the nominations before we do the roll? Ms. Frazee?
Can I just say, I've just been amazed, like, since I've been on here that the, the depth of the people that apply and how amazing, we're so lucky to have such a pool. And I really sit and I actually call people because I don't know who to choose because everyone really could fill the role. We're lucky that we have that.
Ms. Brenner.
Well, I just want to add to that, I, I don't call them usually, but looking at their qualifications, I'm going, whoa. I mean, we get people who seem like they're almost, I won't say overqualified, but thank you for doing this, everybody who applied. It's amazing. This one was really good.
I agree, there's not a bad candidate amongst the five. And one of the things that, you know, this is my fifth, sixth year now of being on the council, I think this is the first time we've had a member of Labor apply. And I think that's a really interesting, it's a really interesting development, it's good to see, so. Further comments before we vote? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Red Brown?
Bartel.
Carol Frazee?
James Hanson.
Barbara Brenner?
Bartel.
Tyler Bird?
Bartel.
Scott Paul Sado?
Bartel.
Todd Donovan?
Jim Hanson.
Barry Buchanan?
Jim Hanson.
I have a count of four for Bartel and three for Hanson, do you could?
You didn't even speak for yourself.
All right, so the next Planning Commission Member for Council, County, representing County Council District Two is Robert Bartel, congratulations. Next item up is council appointments to boards and commissions and committees.
What about Larry Mades, the second one?
We are going there.
Appointment, did I miss that?
If you allow me, I'll continue in order and you'll, you'll see that much later.
Oh, okay.
Next item up is appointment to the Sumas, Everson, Nuxak Flood Control Zone Subzone Advisory Committee. Applicant is Larry Mades. The committee is an integral part of the program reviewing the comprehensive plan for flood control, AB 2019 dash 129. Is there a motion to appoint?
I move by acclamation.
Move by acclamation, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, that passes seven zero. Next item up is request confirmation of executive's appointment of Brian Rusk to the Watcom County Purchase Development Rights Oversized, Oversized Committee.
Oversized committee.
Appointment?
AB 2019 dash 139. Mr. Sado, did you?
I move confirmation.
Move confirmation, seconded by Buchanan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, that passes seven zero. Next item up is request confirmation of executive's appointment of Rachel Arnold to Watcom. Watcom County Marine Resources Committee. AB twenty nineteen dash one four three.
Move to appoint?
Mr. Donovan moves to approve.
Confirm.
Confirm.
Mr. Donovan moves to confirm, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Soodoo seconds, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, that passes unanimously.
This is going like an auction now.
It was always my secret, my, my, my secret, my, my job. I'll tell you later what my four-year, my four-year-old jo, ideal job was, you'll get a laugh out of it. Request confirmation of executive's appointment of Patrick Alasey to the Watcom County Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. AB twenty nineteen dash one four four. Over motion?
I move to confirm.
Oh, no.
We have to think about that one.
That was a final finish.
I'm sad.
All right, Ms. Brenner moves, I'm assuming it was a second, is any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, that passes seven zero. Introduction items. An ordinance amending, oh, sorry, there's three introduction items, do I have a motion to introduce?
Move to introduce.
Mr. Donovan, Mr. Donovan moves to introduce, Mr. Buchanan seconds, any discussion?
Just that, are we, aren't we gonna introduce that one that we had in committee today?
Oh, hey.
That they're gonna bring in two weeks?
No, do we have to do the letter?
That's, that's further along the schedule.
Okay, but what about, there was something on for hearing next time, and I don't see it here.
If it's Deer Creek, it was introduced previously.
Right, it's gonna, so that shouldn't be on his introduction item?
No.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, that passes seven zero. Next up is Natural Resources Committee.
Natural Resources Committee met, and we discussed the resolution that has just been approved by council. That was the only order of business that we had.
Finance and Administrative Services, any further?
Yeah, the committee met, and we had a brief report from the county executive, and nothing, anything serious, and we approved the rest of the items, so, nothing significant.
Thank you. Special Committee, the whole, we had a discussion about the warming shelter, I have here a draft letter that the council asked me to put together, it, do I need to read this in the record? Does the council wish me to read it out?
No, it's a draft letter, asking the city to help us out with leasing.
Bottom, bottom line is we're asking for, should, help with law enforcement coverage for certain, for four shifts, so, okay. Further discussion?
Move, has it been moved?
No.
Move approval.
Move approvals, moved in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, that passes seven zero. Next item, Public Works.
Oh, yeah, we had a discussion regarding the Deer Creek Water Association, their franchise rights, privileges, authority, and all that stuff. It's, it's to get rid of what we already had that was a fifty-year ordinance, I guess it was, and, and put this in its place, and I was asking some questions specifically about if we could have Deer Creek, the language that they have about sending a letter of denial in here, so that we can see clearly what it is with them, because I got, I got two opinions, opposite opinions of what it says and what, what they can do and not do. And we do represent the public, including the people in that district, and when we're doing something like this, it's a contract, and we do have rights, and it was really neat, the prosecutor was here, and he couldn't answer some of my questions, so he said he would be glad to, to talk to me about it, and I'm gonna do that, and hopefully we can get some language in there.
I just wanna add to that, that it just so happened that we had, we spent almost a year on Deer Creek issue, and wherever it went, it went, but, and now we are doing it, and we should be asking the same questions for all other.
Absolutely.
Things come up, and this will be a, our way of making them uniform, like we have been talking about. I think this is the right way of doing it, as they come up for renewal, I think we have a prerogative to actually ask these questions, and, and define those terms in more clarity and transparency for the public benefit. So I, I like the, I, I missed the meeting, but I like that you have been questioning, I wasn't here. So, I, I really think this is the right opportunity to ask those questions.
Good, thank you. Anything else from Public Works?
That was it.
Criminal Justice?
But it's gonna be on in two weeks, and in committee again, and for hearing. Did I say it close enough?
Mr. Buchanan, Criminal Justice?
The Public Works, excuse me, the Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee met today, we had one item, we discussed with the undersheriff, Parks, the potentially repealing or replacing Watcom County Code one point two eight, which is standards for correctional facilities, and we'd be replacing those with a lot of the internal policies, manuals that they have. We had a number of questions, he's, he provided, provided some examples of cross-reference that we could kind of quickly see that there was some correlation, but he also gave us information that we can go on to a, the, one of the drives on the county network, for us individually to be able to check out and verify, cross-referencing various things out of the code to the policy manual. So, we'll have another work session on it, once the council's been able to maybe digest a little bit of that, and come up with some further questions.
Can I ask him a question about it?
Mr. Soodoo, had his hand up first, then.
Yeah, I have a question for our attorney, council attorney, Karen. Ms. Fraes, the question I have is about this same very topic. The way the resolution came to us, or actually, it's an ordinance came to us, is that we are going to delete the corrections thing, and we're going to replace it with three paragraphs, and, okay, five or six paragraphs, so, with very little detail on those. Of course, they have detail, and we've been going back and forth, and I, to me, in my short period here, on the council, this is kind of unusual, that we are approving something with faith, that, okay, we know you're doing a good job, you will keep doing a good job, so go ahead and keep doing your job. I wanted to have your opinion and advise, that shouldn't they do what the PDS did, when they combined three different codes and deleted a whole bunch of stuff, clarified, simplified, and I think we went through that, and it's not only clear to the council members, it is, will be clear to the public. So, what is your opinion, that can we just do something like this, that approve something on a piece of paper, that you are welcome to make the rules as you go?
I think, from what I know about this, Liz Galry in my office is working on this, she's consulted with me enough, so I can kind of sound like I know what I'm talking about, but in this particular instance, I don't think it's a legal issue, I think that legally you can do it that way, that's being proposed. This is sort of an unusual situation, and I think, it's my understanding that different counties do it different ways, and I don't think this is out of the norm, as far as how other counties are handling it. I think it, it may need a little massaging and changing, but, but I think in general, that is an acceptable legal way to do it.
Brenner, then may.
Well, Liz was here today, too, when we had the meeting. My question's for Barry, on the, what is it called, Incarceration Prevention, blah, 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 Task Force, what, I, I like the idea of putting it through the task force, maybe, before we do any adoption. I mean, that just seems like it might be a, a good way to get more, more.
We don't have a committee that could.
It's kind of outside the charge.
Is it?
Yeah.
Oh.
Jill, don't, wouldn't you say? Our, our charge is to look at reducing incarceration.
Well, but maybe figuring this out will help reduce incarceration.
Not necessarily, you know, policies within the correctional facility, so.
We don't have a committee that could do that, really.
Pardon me?
There's not a subcommittee that could really do that.
There's a Law and Justice Committee that could potentially look at something, but there, that's really not their charge.
Not the Law, it's not their charge either, Law and Justice.
Well, no, they're, they're a subcommittee.
Ms. Soodoo, then yourself.
I just had a follow-up to that, 'cause I, I thought we just combined that with an older committee, and I thought that was the charge of the, the other older committee that we combined it with.
That's a good point, we, we could ask that question, because we haven't really, we haven't even met under those auspices yet.
Yes.
So, you know, since, since the.
Yeah, I'd really appreciate it.
We adopted those changes, so, that's a fair question, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, that was my, my question, too, that now it's a legal and Justice, Legal Justice Committee, okay. Now, the, the second thing is, we cannot use the committee to be the drafters of this policy or this ordinance, like, the way it is presented, that here's a J drive, and all these policies are existing, and the, the issue I am having is, policies, what they are referring to, have a mixture of things. Some are policies, some are their training materials, some are their internal directives, how they would tell their deputies what to do and what not to do and everything, they, so there is a hotchpotch. I think what, what they're facing, and I can understand that, they don't have resources, they said, we don't have anybody, we have all these policies done over the last ten, fifteen years, we'll give you the reference to that, and why don't you just say that, okay, with these policies, go ahead and do and manage your stuff? So, it is, you know, like a very mixed soup here, and, and, and it, and, and I think they are afraid of taking it on and separating what their policies are and what the code should look like. They, they don't wanna take that, and they just gave us a disc, okay, you guys read it and figure it out. Now we can pass on the disc to the committee, Legal and Justice System Committee, say, you guys figure it out. We, I think need, they need some legal help to, to separate certain things and topics we already have, you know, there, there's a list of topics, and they can combine something, there, twenty-five topics, they can make into ten, and then they could put wording to that, and then they can refer to, like we do, RCW and WAC, whenever we do something, we may refer to that. They can refer to their policies or something. So I think this is not being talked about, the issue is, they also know, we also know, they need help, they don't have a person, and they're saying, well, we have everything, it is available, why don't you just let us do it? So, that's up to the council, how should we handle it? But giving it to the committee in this format, they can do any better than what we can do.
Ms. Fraes, I just have a question, it'd be useful if you could give us, and if you can't give us the answer now, if you could give it to us later. I'd like to understand what our role is legally, in terms of the oversight of the policies of the Sheriff's Department or the correctional facility.
I, I certainly can't do that, I know Ms. Galry has been working with the Sheriff's Office on this, and she, she could help on this as well.
Right. Where my question comes from is, if we've currently got effectively policies in the county code, that suggests to me that the council.
Well, I think it's standards in county code, as opposed to policy.
Okay, so, okay, so it'd be useful to understand the, the, the differences, but I'd like to understand what traditionally county governments have, what role they've had in terms of those standards or policies, whatever, and then what is the limits, and then we can decide what role we want to, what, we can be fully informed as to what role we should be taking under, under state statute, and then what role we want to take to the degree we have discretion. So I would personally appreciate that, having a better understanding, would that be consistent with the rest of the council? Yeah? Okay, so, Ms. Brenner?
Well, I just wanna comment on, on what Councilmember Soodoo said. I don't, I don't think the reason is they wanted us to do it because they didn't, you know, they, I, I don't know, I have a whole different opinion. I feel like they really did wanna do a good job, they don't have the staff to do a lot of this stuff, and, you know, maybe they need more staff to do something like this, but I didn't feel like it was coming from, I totally disagree with the people who are saying this was, you know, them wanting to usurp our power. I feel like they just don't have the staff, and that's where I feel like it would be great if you can figure out from the Law and Justice Subcommittee, or whatever it's called, how we could maybe work on something like that, whether it means helping to get, you know, doing a budget item for more staffing or something. I, I would really like, I'd like us all to feel more comfortable about it, that's all.
Ms. Soodoo?
Yeah, I, I think the, the other thing is, which, which concerns me, is unintended consequences. You approve something like this, goes on, council changes, and new people come in, and it goes on, and five, seven years go by, and something goes wrong, and then people start going back, okay, who was the guy, how did this happen? You know, that there was an approval of code, yeah, and where is he? He's gone. So I think that's how I, I see it, that we should do the due diligence, and, and, and make sure that standards are defined, and then they can have their policies. That's my only concern is.
Further, oh, this wasn't a discussion, this was a, an update, any further update on Criminal Justice?
That's it.
Thank you. Next item up was Planning and Development Committee.
We talked about the TDR program and the DSC credits, as well as housing affordability, and then short-term vacation rentals today. Update done.
Anything further? Councilmember, updates, Mr. Buchanan? Ms. Frazi?
Just, it was great that everyone stepped up, and everyone's volunteered at the Warming Center at least twice, some people like four or five times, and I just appreciate the staff staying up and getting up early and texting us the whole time and keeping us up to date, so thanks.
Mrs. Donovan?
I would echo that, I would love to read the list of people who've been volunteering there. It's been pretty amazing to see the community step up, and all of us, and I'm tired, and I think a lot of us are tired. But updates, the Lake Watcom Stormwater Utility folks are still meeting, we had another meeting recently, have come up with a fee structure, getting an idea of what this might look like. We're gonna have another meeting and a public hearing, that'll be then coming back to council. Wendy Harris had some important concerns, I've met with her, I'll try to follow up on those. And then we had some really good news about oysters and shellfish, and I'm too tired to remember what that was.
Yeah, they've been conditionally approved.
The Joint Shellfish Committee announced that we, I think, are opening up more space, so that was good news, they're doing really good work.
Ms. Brenner?
Oh.
Mr. Bud?
I was super impressed with the, our team, I mean, with the homeless thing, Jennifer and Dana emailing and texting, I mean, I don't know, ten-thirty at night, I'm getting texts, how's everything going? Has an officer arrived? Do you need anything? Five AM, how's everything going? Is there any issues? I was like, do you sleep? What are you all doing? I mean, it's crazy, I mean, that's, that's not paid, right? That's just passion and, and follow-through and work and awesome effort, and thank you so much for looking out for us and taking care of it.
I know, I, I didn't have anything, but, yeah, you guys, you did as much as we did.
More, way more.
I mean, yeah, she was, I was calling her back at all hours and trying to figure out, I didn't know if one of the vol, I didn't know if we had a male volunteer, and you have to have at least one male vol, one male there, and he was so neat, this guy, who, it's his, he said, yeah, my name is kind of, is androgynous the word or something? I don't know, he was really fun, so it all worked out, but that was thanks to Dana and Jennifer, they figured it out. The whole staff? Uh, yeah, everybody, everybody, I'm sorry, everybody. She was the one, though, that got all my blah, 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 blah.
Ms. Soodoo?
Yeah, I just second everybody said, and, and thanks to the staff for getting this organized. I wanna share something with you, is that I did attend the meeting with the Department of Ecology, Mary Werner came on Friday, and the Watershed Management Board had asked, and. and she brought four staff people, senior staff people, actually, the person was here, who actually do the rulemaking for whole state, and hydrologist. A couple of things I wanna share with you, you probably heard about it or not, one thing is, they said they're not gonna look at in-stream flow levels, period. They're not gonna look at
They're not gonna?
No, they're not gonna look at that. They're not gonna look at metering, period. They're not gonna look at fee, period. They're gonna only look at two things, one is the withdrawal limit, the 3,000 gallons per day, they said they would study that, not saying that we will change that, but that is something they will, under their purview, they will compare that and everything. Niskwali Watershed has done excellent job, and they, their community got everything, agreed to and approved, they got a grant, and we didn't, and they are going to use that model, not necessarily impose those things, but they're gonna use that model to work on our region. The, what I'm forgetting, yes, what they're going to review, the timing of the in-stream flows, you know, like, start from, say, April to August, so they may revisit that, their in-stream rules of minimum flow, and the timing of those minimum flows, they will review those, but they are not going to change the standards of whatever the values they have put in. So many cubic feet per second, or whatever, they're not gonna change those, but they will try to work with the timing of those, if that can make a positive impact, that we are able to comply with. They will study everything, say that, you know, if you shift that timing this and this way, our compliance rate can go up, so they're gonna study that. So the biggest thing is, is that, and which I did share with all, there were a lot of people there, all planning unit and Watershed Management, all the tribes were there, I think the biggest lesson was, that we were talking about 1% of the total water, and I asked this question, that you guys have brought such a large team here, and to talk about 1% of the water, and what you're gonna touch it, what you're gonna not touch, and all this, when do we get to, and then we are making wafers out of that 1% sliver, you know? So I said, like, we have a large pie, and you've taken 1% of the pie, and you're trying to slice it, dice it many different ways, what about the 99% of the water, when do we get to talk about it? And I think their answer was very polite, that you guys should talk about it, means community, like, we're a one, we should be bringing that
Of course.
Of course, right? And we're not even talking about it. And I think that is the lesson, that we blew it, maybe I'm using very strong words, we didn't come to an agreement on such a small amount of water, and people were for metering, not for metering. They came in one-liner, we're not gonna look at metering, period. So where is our discussion about 2,000 wells and metering, and all this discussion went on for like three months? And fee, and everything? So I think that we must not lose perspective of the overall picture, and things, and we could have gotten grant, I asked that question, that if we had sent the approval, one thing they will, we know doing the rulemaking, now somebody else is gonna make rules for us, and we'll totally gladly accept that. We have no input into that, and, so I think it was interesting, and I wanted to make people realize, all the people who were there, that we shouldn't lose perspective of the bigger issue of water than just working on this, so I just wanted to share that.
Thank you.
Ms. Brenner.
Yeah, but I have to say, we didn't blow it at all, it was them, they're the ones who gave us a short deadline, and said it can only be about that 1%, so it was, they set us up, and I agree with you, if they had said, do all the parts of the pie, and you've got till a certain date, it would've worked out a lot better, I think.
I have to add one sentence here, one year to talk about 1% of the water?
We didn't have a year.
We were discussing that, who should be at the meeting, who should not at the meeting, what is the process, what is the, we wasted more time on discussing that than the contents, what we were trying to do. Anyways, I have a different opinion than yours, so, and I think we agree to disagree.
And we're still discussing it.
Yeah, we're still discussing it.
And we have one more item on the agenda, so Ms. Brenner.
Yeah, I just wanna say, we didn't have one year, we had like four or five months, we did not have a year, we absolutely didn't have a year to do it.
It was January 19 to end of February 1st, or January 15, we had 12 months.
We didn't have 12 months, not for that particular thing.
So, the only other update I would say is
Under the bridge.
Any other update I will add? Did you think we were gonna adjourn, did you?
I just, I gotta stretch.
Okay, I gotta stretch too.
The other update I'd like to do is, just to add my admiration and support from my fellow council members and for the county council staff, and also the department heads and others that jumped in and helped. I think there's a lot of question as to the appropriateness of the facility, and the need given, the mission. I think the greatest value out of all this is, to me, it's elevated, it served as a good reminder of those in our community that really do suffer from a lack of shelter, and I've been really pleased to see the debates and discussions with other members of the community on this issue, and that, I think, has been the real reward, beyond obviously providing shelter, but the real reward for the county government as a whole. And if there's nothing further, we are adjourned, thank you.